And with that, I'll call to order the school board, or, uh, regular board meeting of the Prior Lake Savagery Schools, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members are present with the exception of Mr. Sorenson and Ms. Inger, Todd and Melissa. And?
And Isabel is sitting in for Charlotte this evening as our student rep.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Tell me.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes five zero. Next on the agenda is the Truth in Taxation meeting for the proposed 2018 payable 2019 levy certification. We'll start with a presentation. Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Sink.
Good evening, Board members. Chair Wolf, Dr. Stallow, tonight we will review the truth in taxation in preparation for approval of our levy certification. Let me start this slideshow here. As part of this truth in taxation hearing, the things that we will talk about is our tax levy calendar, our basic school funding, some factors contributing to the change in our levy, our actual levy certification 2018 paid 2019, some graphical analysis, and some budget information. A school district tax levy must be either set by state formula or voter approved. Our school funding is highly regulated by the state of Minnesota, and so that's, the state sets the formulas which determine our revenue, which is very different from the cities and counties. Most of our revenue is based on specific amounts per pupil unit, and that is set, the state also sets a tax policy for local school districts. And so they set the maximum amount of authorized property tax levy. So, as you know, in September, that you approved a preliminary levy and the district can levy less than what the state approves or authorizes, but you cannot levy more than that. And then the state also authorizes the school board to submit referendums for, and for operating in capital needs to voters for approval. So, as you can see, we have different parts of our levy certification, the voter-approved referendums, those levies that are set by state formula, and those are listed there, as well as the levies authorized by the state based on our local need, and those are listed for such things as reemployment and safe schools, career and technical, our leases, et cetera. A comparison just a little bit to, because people may be attending cities and counties, as well as the school district's truth in taxation. For the cities and counties, their budget year is the same as the calendar year, so the 2019 taxes provide revenue for that budget year. Whereas our school district, those taxes that are collected for next year actually go to next year's school year. And so the board hasn't set a budget for 2019-20 school year yet, and so those taxes are being collected and will be in next school year's budget. It is quite different from the cities and counties. And those, some factors impacting the tax change on the district's levy are those issues driven by state-level decision-making, changes in our levies determined by the state formula, which you talked a little bit about, changes in the sales ratio impacting our adjusted net tax capacity, any laws mandating code compliance, issues determined by district voters, bond referendums, and excess levy referendums. And then those local factors, which could be, as our district is growing, some inflationary pressure on real estate, abatements, property improvements not previously taxed. So when those get added to the tax rules, that improves our total net tax capacity, and changes an individual assessed market value, and maybe changes in classification when it goes from homestead to rental, or vice versa. And then also, as you can see, we'll talk a little bit about adjusted net tax capacity. We had a 13.2% increase in the district, our referendum market value. So those, the referendum market value is for those pieces of our levy that are referendum-approved, so that's 8.6% increase. In that value, we have an increase in our pupil units, as we've discussed for several years now, as we continue to grow, and then the change in ag property tax credit. So as our district grows, you can see over the past several years, I'm showing 10 years here, of adjusted net tax capacity. And so we continue to grow. You can see where the last dip was because of the recession, and so you can see we've surpassed where the district was back in 2008. And the same with our referendum market value, and as, you can see, it shows 2017, because that's the last year that we have full information for. And so we don't have all the information for 2018 yet, and that's why that's not showing on our analysis here. So you can see again here with our referendum market value, we far exceeded where we've been in the past. Our district enrollment growth here as well, you can see about 13 years of growth in the district, where it was just slightly over 6,000 students, and where we're almost 9,000 students, or closing in quickly on 9,000 students. So when we talk about our 2018 paid 2019 preliminary levy certification, the board approved the maximum in September. There was a change, a slight change, in our levy certification, because when the board approves the maximum, that allows the state to make adjustments in our levy, if there are adjustments. And there is, for the first time in nine years, an adjustment since the preliminary levy. Since I've been here, it's the first time it's happened. We had an adjustment in our leased facilities, and you can see what it shows for the preliminary levy is $1,224.220, and now it's showing an estimated final of $1,259,054. And that was an adjustment due to Southwest Metro as the ability to lease on our district. There was an adjustment there, and so that increased our, the district's final levy certification. But other than that, you can see that all the other areas are the same as what the board has approved in the preliminary levy in September. And that, in the general fund, was a 2.41% increase. If we look a little bit about the preliminary levy in community education, there was a decrease in that, especially in our extended day disabled, and so there was an 18% decrease there. And our debt service fund went up 1.8% overall. That reduction in debt excess, I just want to talk about that a little bit. When the district is required to have an additional 5% in our debt service fund over what we're required to pay, and we have to levy by law those dollars, and anytime we have more than that 5% in our fund balance, we request that that money gets reduced on our levy certification, so that in essence it goes back to our taxpayers. So anything that we have over that 5%, that we give that back. So if you look at our school district total tax levy, you can see the 2018 actual, the 2019 preliminary, and the final is slightly above that. What the board approved in September was a 1.64% increase, and we're at 1.75 at this point. What was sent out on the districts, when district residents received their tax statements, the 1.75 is what was listed on their tax statements. Most people in our district probably did not see an increase unless they saw a large increase in their valuation of their home. They may have seen an increase at that point, but with a 1.75%, with such a large increase in our adjusted net tax capacity, as well as our market value, most people would not have seen an increase in their school taxes. Looking at our levy limitation analysis, you can see how much the state determined, the local discretion is 12%, and the majority of our referend, of our levy limitation is based on voter approval, at 67%. A 10-year levy history, you can see it's pretty, it's, the only year that we had anything over even 5% is last year, when there was an approval by the voters of the bond and operating referendum. Originally, that preliminary levy was set at 2.36%. This shows the actual revenues and expenditures from 2018, so last year's actual revenues and expenditures, and 2019 preliminary budget that the board approved in June, and later in today's meeting, you're going to approve the revised budget. But as part of this process, we do want to show what we, where the district is at financially for last year, and what we had proposed at the beginning of this year. As you can see, the district's fund balances are, well, we've talked about many times, we're within the board's fund balance policy, or a little above that, between 8 and 12%. So the other thing that I wanted to mention here is that the state of Minnesota has two tax refund programs and one tax deferral program, so that there are options out there if people are seeing large increases in their taxes. Overall, that they can go out, they can either consult their tax professional, or visit the Department of Revenue website to see if they qualify for either any of these three op, tax refunds or deferrals. The Minnesota tax, property tax refund, the circuit breaker refund, special property tax refund, our senior citizen property tax deferral. Those are the three options, and it never hurts to go out and look and see if they can qualify. Any questions? Included also in here is the tax calendar. I don't really talk about that, but that is, the board has to approve the final levy at a December board meeting. And that's your final stage for the tax levy for 2019 paid 20.
All right. Are there any questions for Julie at this time? Go on, Mary?
Julie, a couple of questions. One, last year, this time, we had an adjusted net tax capacity of 3.7%, and now it's 13.2%. And given the fact that they did come back and adjust us and all that kind of stuff, what is, what is the future impact of that? Are they going to come back and look at us again, or is it just?
It adjusts every year.
Okay.
Every year, based on the property values, the classifications in the district of all of the properties in the district, the county does the evaluations of all of that. And whatever those totals are, that, those numbers are what our adjusted net tax capacity is, I actually think it went above that 3-point-some percent last year, but I could be wrong. I have to go back and look. But I think it was up closer to 7 or 8% last year, and 13 this year.
I actually looked at last year's, because I thought this year was kind of high, and it did say 3.2% in last year's board. Is the adjusted net tax capacity, is that also, I mean, is that by the average home value, or is that actually just because we had so many new properties here for taxable? How did that work?
Right. Adjusted net tax capacity is determined by the county. So what they do is they look at every home, and they look at every business, and they look at every rental property, and that's, there's a whole list of classifications that are on the Department of Education, or Department of Revenue's website. So they evaluate all of those properties, and they assign them that classification. It could be ag land, it could be rentals, it could be homestead. And all of those properties, depending on what the valuation of those homesteads, have different taxing authorities. The county has different taxing authority on them, so, I should say, really, the state does. So they're the ones that determine that, and that's what eventually, all of those properties, and however they're calculated by the county, end up being our adjusted net tax capacity.
Okay. I did look that up, but they did seem to think it was because of the number of, increase in number of taxable homes, property versus, yeah.
As we continue to grow, it changes our adjusted net tax capacity and the valuation. So if homes around us are growing in valuation, then that adjusts, that affects that adjusted net tax capacity, definitely.
Okay.
So it could be current homes increasing in value as well.
Okay. Because I was also noticing that this is a, we had a fairly large difference between our referendum market value from 2017 and this year, as well as the difference between the taxable market value and the referendum market value was, was a larger gap, too. And I just didn't know how that was going to affect us going forward. I mean, we're planning for this every year. You don't necessarily know what's going to hit us, but when you start going into these years where they're going up and down so, so much that, you know?
It really, it just is, a lot of it is driven by market. So, you know, if, if a recession hits, it could affect us, if, you know, kind of like it has, you saw the dip previously. Those things all affect the valuation that, it's all based on what you can sell your home or your property for, and that's kind of what they base that on.
Right. Well, strategic financial planning can't be easy, and so that's why I was asking, you know, if there's any concern about any dips or anything like that, or, okay.
Actually, as the market value goes up,
We get.
The taxes get spread across more properties, and people usually don't see an increase, or when we have such a small increase in the levy certification, most people don't see an increase. It would be only if they saw personally a large increase in the valuation of their home, then they may see an increase in their taxable, what the school taxes would be.
Okay. Another question I had was on that, that leased facilities. You had said that it was Southwest Metro made the change in the numbers between what we had said preliminary and our estimated final. But the amount in the lease of facilities that includes our current leased ALC, as well as the MNCAP's leased and the other leased facilities, is, do you not have an idea of how much that's going to change once we get the ALC? Is that number, I would assume it's significantly going to-
$120,000.
Pardon me?
About $120,000.
Is that it, from the 1.24 million? We're only going to see that? Okay. That, that was?
And you know, that really does vary, because it depends on what the, because we're part of the Southwest Metro, if they decided to levy more, and that was approved by the superintendents and the people on the board there, that affects the district's levy as well. So it's not just the school district's levy for their leased spaces, it's the Southwest Metro leasing that they're charging to our district and our taxpayers on their behalf for our students attending that facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who'd like to come up and address the board, or have questions about the truth in taxation? Seeing none. One final call. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. We, Julie, the approval is on the final budget in new business, part of the agenda, correct? Right.
Right.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are considered to be routine in nature and to be enacted by one motion. Tonight's consent agenda is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the building bond investment reports, the bank reconciliation statement for October 2018, the approval of the school board minutes for November 5th, and the special meeting held on November 9th to canvass the election returns, and for our board study session November 19th, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda?
Tell me.
By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Do you want a discussion?
Consent agenda items are considered, there's no discussion on consent agenda.
There's no dis, okay.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
That passes four to one. Next on the agenda is the resolution for the acceptance of the gifts. Tonight's we have gifts from the Alina Health, from the Shakopee Midwaketa and Sioux Community, from Miriam Rocco, from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign, from the PAA Band Boosters, from Anna Duke and Jeffers Pond Elementary, and from the Wells Fargo Community Support Program, and from Kristen Kramer, and from Lunds and Barley's of Prior Lake. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the gifts?
Tell me.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, this is a resolution, so requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 That passes five zero. Next on the agenda is Laker Pride Special Recognition and Laker Showcase.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight we have an opportunity to recognize, celebrate, and thank three of our school board members for their years of service. Rich Wolf, who's serving as our chair this year, has served two four-year terms for a total of eight years. Ben Hanson has served one term for four years. And Todd Sorenson, who's unable to be with us this evening, has also served two terms of four years for eight total years. So tonight, we thank them for their years of service. We thank them for their dedication. We thank them for their commitment for always putting students first in decision-making. You've helped us improve as a district. You've helped keep us focused on our strategic plan, and ensuring that our mission comes to life for all of our students. So on behalf of the school district, I want to thank you for everything that you've done to serve our community and to support our school district.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Did you want to say anything?
Maybe leave it till the end.
Okay.
I can hear.
Okay. That sounds great. Secondly, we also want to recognize some of our leaders and staff in our Department of Operations at the school district. Two of our leaders, Jim Delwo and Maureen Mullin. If the two of you would join me up here, please, that would be fantastic. Jim serves as the Director of Transportation and Operations, and Maureen Mullin is the Assistant Director. Earlier this fall, Jim was recognized by the Prior Lake Rotary Club as an Honorary Paul Harris Fellow for his dedicated service for lots of things, but specifically for all the work that he's done, leading transportation and assisting in transportation and safety with the Music Fest, which often gets about 15,000 people per night. I believe it was two years ago, a storm rolled in, and Jim was responsible for leading all of those event-goers to safety in a very short amount of time. So really, exceptional work. And the Rotary Club is grateful, and we're grateful for everything that Jim does here, as well as in our community. So thank you very much. And second of all, Maureen Mullin, who just recently joined our district, was also the honorary of a wonderful award this fall. Maureen won the, earned the award, the two, she was named the 2018 Facilities Management Professional of the Year by the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professional Association, which is a great honor within her organization, and certainly speaks to her leadership and her work, and we're grateful that she's chosen to join us. Maureen is the first female recipient of the award, and a pioneer, which is fantastic. Congratulations, and thank you. I'm going to hand this over to Jim and Maureen now, who are also going to help recognize some of their staff members, as well as just give a little overview of some of the great things happening behind the scenes.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you again. Just want to highlight some of the things that go on with operations, transportation, health, and safety. I'm going to start out with some of our energy numbers. So every district in the state reports to B3 benchmarking, and it's, all schools report their energy use numbers. Currently, we are ranked 11th in the state in our energy, total energy use, and we can break that down further by saying we are third in the, in the state amongst districts of similar size. So I think we're doing a really good job on energy. So here are some graphs, just to show how our energy is trending down. And it's important to note, I think, that we've added square footage, as well as added a lot more equipment to the sites. But it's, it's remarkable to me that the way our staff run our buildings, that we are trending down in a really impactful way to the district. This is water, again. Our baseline is the gray line on top, and you can see we are trending down almost every single year. So these are the costs of our utilities as a percentage. So you can see the major driver of our utility budget is electricity, followed by natural gas, fuel, oil, and water. The 6% is, from January to September of this year, we are 6% under our baseline, so we're, we're still doing good. A couple of other comparisons. Okay. So our baseline electricity was $880,000. And our current actual is $834,000. And fuel, oil, similar trend. And I'm sorry, that's not fuel, oil, it's gas. $314,000, we're at $275. Water, same story, $211,000, and we're at $206. That's in dollars. So if we want to convert that into by square foot, electricity, we're at 67 cents a square foot. Our gas, we're at 24 cents a square foot. Our water is at 16 cents a square foot on our baseline. We're currently at 63 cents a square foot for electricity, fuel, 21 cents, and water at 16. So in all energy, per square foot, our electric and fuel is 23.2. Fuel is 40.5, our actual currently, is 21.35. And for fuel, it's 33.6. There's a lot of data that support the work that our staff put into, and how important they take energy use. It's, when you consider we have 1.3 million square feet, so if we can get it under a dollar a square foot, that's There's a couple of highlights of operations by the numbers. So we have 11 school buildings that we own. We leased two buildings, or parts of two buildings, 1.1,378,541 square feet of conditioned space. So it's either heating or cooling, or both. We have 311.6 acres and 48 outbuildings, sheds, garages. 69 operations department staff who are scheduled to be on site from 5:30 a.m. Monday through Friday, till midnight, Monday through Friday. And we also cover Saturday, 10 a.m. till 6 p.m. We have a work order system, we call it School Dudes. We've completed 6,901 work requests in 2018.
All right. So we're doing some Laker Pride recognition this evening. We have four people to recognize tonight. Gina Fern, Matt Harrison, Paul Haddon, and Dave Bonback. We'll start with Gina. She can come up, if she's here. Thank you. Gina Fern is our facility scheduler. She lives in Prior Lake with her husband Brad. She has two children, Ryan is 22, and Amber 19. She has three dogs, and says she, quote, "loves my dogs." She didn't say that about her children, but I imagine she does. She enjoys painting, gardening, and the outdoors. She started with us as a facility scheduler in 2003, and she's in her 15th year of doing facility scheduling for ISD 719. Last year, she entered 3,067 permits. I think I was supposed to change slides here. 3,096, excuse me, and that averages 52 a week. This does include our school programs that uses the space after hours. She She works with 80 to 85 different community user groups. That does not include school-related programming. She also schedules and monitors for community education classes and all of the turf-filled users, and she works with the city of Savage to schedule McCall ELC classrooms for our district. So she is definitely our calm in the storm when it comes to our facilities and scheduling and coordinating. We thank her for that and for being the master of keeping many balls in the air. Gina Fern. Our next, our person to recognize is Matt Harrison. Excuse me, Matt Garrison, excuse me, who is the head of outside maintenance. Matt lives in Savage with his wife Sarah, his two children, Jessica, who's 15, and Ben, who is 14. Matt enjoys walks through the woods, camping, fishing, hunting, and road trips with his family. He's been employee since 1997 and started out and staying with the outside maintenance crew. Matt and his crew of six coordinate their work closely with activities and community ed. Besides the groundwork, they deliver district mail and do package and food deliveries. They do all of the mowing for the grounds and fields, as well as doing game and event setups. He has excellent mechanics on his team who care for the ground and snow removal equipment. And at this time of year, we especially appreciate that his crew does snow removal at all hours and at any hour. So along with the work we do, they do, we thank Matt and his crew for all the times they get up at night to check the radar and the actual snowfall, and for coming in early, 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 clearing snow to make sure we all have safe passage. Thank you very, Matt, very much, Matt, for the work you've been doing. Our next person to recognize is Paul Haddon, who is the head of inside maintenance. Paul lives in Prior Lake with his wife Josie and two cats, Dennis and Frankie. He has two children, Mike, who's 25, and Katie, who's 22. His hobbies include gardening, rock hounding, lapidary, charcuterie, and restoring a series Land Rover, which, if you've seen it around, it is the coolest vehicle. Paul has been a PLSAS employee since 1995, starting out as head custodian at Westwood. He's the first on the alarm monitoring company's emergency call list. And along with that, for most staff, me included, most emergency repairs begin with step one, call Paul. He gets calls at all hours of the day and night and most weekends. These calls have often involved going into a building in the middle of the night, sometimes during the worst weather. Think on a roof in January, 23 below wind chill, trying to repair a rooftop unit and get the idea, and sometimes working all night and into the next day to get things up and safely running so that school can be held in that building. Inside maintenance is, I think of him as the ready response team. In my short time here, I have personally witnessed them making several major repairs in amazingly short amounts of time with minimal disruptions to students and staff and with minimal costs. We thank him and his crew of skilled technicians who save the district money every day with their high-level maintenance and repair work and for coming in at any time, day or night, to do it. Thank you very much, Paul. Dave Bomback is our next person to recognize. Dave is Prior Lake High School's lead custodian. He lives in Farmington with his wife Janet, two children, Morgan, who's 19, Jack, who's 16, and one dog, and he didn't say, but I imagine he loves his dog. Outside of work, he enjoys watching his youngest son play sports, going to movies with his oldest son, conversing with family and friends, traveling, going on date nights with his wife, which he says consists of dinner at a restaurant, followed by a trip to Costco and Cub. Sounds familiar. He started working at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools as a night custodian in August of 2003. He supervises 13 people, which is the largest crew in our department. He also manages our biggest building at 387,635 square feet. The high school custodians clean an average of 34,610 square feet, which is a lot. 26,000 is considered a good number for high schools. That building houses approximately 2,900 people, which is bigger than a lot of towns I've lived in. It's a lot to manage. High school never sleeps, so no matter the number of events in a night or a weekend, Dave and his crew always have the high school ready to go for school in the morning. Dave's communication skills and sense of humor always shine through, especially in his weekly high school staff building use updates. He finds the best quotes for those, and Dave is known to regularly swing by the high school on his days off, just to make sure things are okay. So he cares a lot. We thank him for his dedicated work at the high school.
So again, I'd like to thank Gina, Paul, Matt, Dave. They frequently go out of their way to make sure that our buildings and grounds are well kept. Again, like Maureen had said, they come all hours of the day and night to make sure that our buildings are safe. Truly dedicated staff, and it can be anything from a power outage to a burglar alarm to just about anything. So I appreciate everything they do, I really and truly do. I think I'm proud of their work, and I think the district's lucky to have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the candidates for employment, and I'll hand the duty over to Mr. Matt Mons.
All right, good evening. To start out here, I'm recommending the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the candidates for employment?
So made.
Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, is there any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes 5-0.
And next up, I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the leaves of absence?
So made.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0.
And next, I present two district retirements, and together, coming out of the Physical Education Department, they represent 47 years of experience within the district, and it's just one of those opportunities to really think about the staggering number of students that they've been able to work with throughout their time. So that's Darla Beichel and then John Larson. Just a note there, too, I've had the opportunity to work a little bit more closely with John over time, and what I can tell you is that in passing, I've heard a couple of comments regarding his tenure in the district recently, one of which was a heck of a teacher, and the other one was an incredibly sweet man. And I would echo both of those. And I'd also say, working with John through really substantial department budget cuts, and also working with John through this process of retirement, his focus has always been on the student experience, making sure that that comes first and foremost. And so for that and all of those years of service for both of these candidates, I'd just like to say, thank you very much. And with that, I present the retirements.
Do I have a motion for the approval of district retirements?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is the approval of the resignation.
Thank you. Tonight, I bring forward with some mixed emotions, a request to approve the resignation for Executive Director of Human Resources, Mr. Matt Mons. As I bring this request to you, I want to recognize Matt for the 10 years of dedicated service he has brought to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. In his role over the last 10 years, he's helped hire, I think, the majority of staff and administrators in the district. He's improved and created systems and processes. He's created a culture, whether it be in negotiations or Q-Comp, meet and confer, administrative meetings, whatever we're doing, that is collaborative, open, and built on trust. I've appreciated Matt's wisdom, his calm nature, and his unwavering solution-seeking mindset. As a strategic thinker, Matt has impacted all aspects of education at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and operations. Thank you, Matt, for all that you have done to advance the work of our mission, and thank you for doing it with so much heart and soul. We will miss you, and we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
With that, I do request your approval of Matt's resignation.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the resignation?
So made.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments?
I have comments.
Go ahead.
I had a two- or three-page speech I was going to give, but my voice is kind of gone, so you're all lucky. I had the opportunity to be part of the hiring process when Matt came here, and I had some concerns because historically, our district wasn't all that great with relations between the board, administration, and staff. And I thought, how is Matt, you know, kind of fresh, out of college, how's he going to handle this? And I asked him kind of that question, and pretty much without hesitation, said, "I can do it." And I still wasn't so sure, but over the years, he's proved me wrong, I guess, or relieved my concerns over and over and over. Matt understands the importance of relationships and building those relationships and working with people before there's a problem. You know, he's good at solving the problem, but he tries to avoid having that problem happen in the first place. So he'll be really missed, and I'm hoping our new HR director will take that advice to heart as we move forward. When we first started working on negotiations together, it would be hours and hours, weeks, months, seemed like it was never going to end. But Matt changed all that, and now negotiations go a lot faster, and there's a lot greater respect on both sides of the fence, I guess. I have no doubt that you'll do great in your next adventure. I'm sure you'll do better than you have here, but at the same time, I'm really sad to see you leave. But I'm excited for you, and I guess that's it.
I was trying to figure out what to prepare to say tonight, and I just really appreciate Matt's leadership and guidance throughout the years, just even as being, when you become in as a new board member and you don't have a lot of experience, it's, you rely on, you know, the executive administration. And Matt was really integral in helping me learn the ways, I guess, of a board member. And I'm going to really miss his great chats we've had together. He is very wise beyond his years. He was young when he came here. I don't, he's been here a while now. But I know he'll do great in his next adventure, so we will miss you. And yes, Mr., I'm not going to say his name right, Jim, has big shoes to fill, so thank you.
I also didn't, I thought a few things of what to say, but I didn't have a chance to prepare them, but I wanted to thank you. As Dr. Stahl said, it's very bittersweet in the fact of seeing you leave. I know that the district is in a much better place than what it was even four years ago when I was first on the board, but very happy for you, not only from a shorter commute, but also for being able to leave your footprint on the next district and make, you know, similar, if not greater, impacts to other students and other staff. So thank you for your service and the time obviously spent, multiple snowstorms, I'm sure, commuting as far as you did.
You know, being the newest board member here, I've had a lot of questions, and Matt, you've been incredibly patient, and you've answered quite a few of them that I've had, and they've been very helpful to me. I also want to make the point where they keep on talking about you were so young. You're still young, okay? I didn't want, I didn't want to end with that, you know? You were young when you started, and now you've aged. But I do, I want to thank you. You've been incredibly helpful, very open, very considerate, and, you know, no question was too easy or too difficult, and you've even taken the time to come over and explain some things to me, which I have greatly appreciated. It's made me feel much more welcome. Thank you.
And I, too, would like to wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and say thank you as a board member coming on. I've been able to witness your calm demeanor in negotiations and in conversations, and making sure that all viewpoints are heard and understood. I benefited from your knowledge and your work here, and you've made our life as a board much easier, just recently with the teacher contract, which districts negotiate a settlement before the contract starts. So thank you very much for all your hard work and the best of luck.
May I say something briefly? So what I just want to say really briefly is I'm tremendously thankful for the opportunity to really start my career in this district. Yep, just tremendously thankful there. And then, I would like to say I'm really proud of the work that we've all done together over the 10 years that I've spent with Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And lastly, and most importantly, I'm going to miss the hell out of my colleagues and my staff in the district. And that's the piece. All of the people that I've gotten to work with here, thank you very much. I've really appreciated it for sure.
All right, with that, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the approval of the resignation signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the approval of Executive Director of Human Resources candidate, presented by Dr. Stahl.
Thank you. Next, because Matt's resignation was accepted, now I would like to request approval of the new Executive Director of Human Resources candidate. After a detailed process that involved a large stakeholder team, I am recommending and seeking approval on the hiring of Jim Quorum as our next Executive Director of HR. Jim currently serves as the Executive Director of Administrative Services in Albert Lee, where he oversees human resources and technology. He's also served as an assistant principal there and a biology teacher. Jim has also performed duties as Lieutenant Colonel in Medical Administration in the Minnesota Air National Guard. Jim is enthusiastic to be joining Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, and I'm confident that as he seeks continued conversations with Matt, we will have a smooth transition as Matt leaves for his new role in White Bear Lake. So with that, I request the hiring of Jim Quorum as the Executive Director of Human Resources.
With that, do I have a motion for the approval for the hiring of the Director of Human Resources candidate, Jim Quorum? By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, is there any questions or comments for Dr. Stahl? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is approval of job description. Should I let you take this, Dr. Stahl?
Certainly. I'm in the process of hiring a new candidate. Mr. Mons and I had an opportunity to review the job description and provide an update before the posting of that went out. So with that, I would like to seek approval on that.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval of the job description for the Executive Director of Human Resources?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next, there's no unfinished business this evening, so we move on to new business, the adopt the 2018 payable 2019 final levy certification.
Good evening again. Earlier tonight, you heard the truth in taxation. My recommendation is the board approved the final levy for the 2019 paid 20 school year, or levy certification.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the 2018 payable 2019 final levy certification?
So made.
By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any additional comments or questions for, or Ms. Sink? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next is the final 2018-19 budget approval.
So in November, I came to the board talking about enrollment and the final budget discussion. We always revise the budget in December, after we find out how many students we have as of October 1, and update that, and update our budget as well for reflecting all the changes that have been made since the board approved the preliminary budget in June. And so you can see our budgeted enrollment of June 11 was 8,747.
And so you can see our budget and enrollment of June 11 was 8,747. And early childhood special education was 69. And I'm recommending that we update our enrollment to 8,767, so 20 additional students. And our ECSE would remain the same. So a total enrollment update for 8,836 students. That does reflect in some additional revenues that the district would receive because of the additional students that we receive. That would bring in another 202,971. Where also what is different from the November meeting is we did have a chance to really look into our special education revenue. And so we determined that we would receive an additional $480,000. And that, I did not bring that forward in November, but I am bringing it forward for this final budget update. There's some changes in the tuition. So we are actually paying less in tuition than we have in the past. And so that reflects in some additional revenue for the district. Some other areas that we did talk about, and some integrative grants that were brought forward, mental health grants, increased federal funding and title programs, and the school safety grant of 316,000. So an additional revenue of just slightly over a million dollars. For general fund expenditures, these mainly came to the board between June, the preliminary budget, and today. And so some additional staffing expenditures approved for 317,000. Some additional funding for title and mental health grants, those federal grants and the safety grant. So you're seeing the offsetting expenditure for those. We had some site department carryover. The district allows staff and departments to carry over in schools, the individual school buildings, to carry over their budgets from year to year. We do not have a user to lose it in this district, and so they're able to carry that over. So that is 643,000. Some additional staff development carryover as well of 148,000. Safe schools carryover of 25,000 that we are using for additional cameras and those types of things for our safe schools. Achievement and integration has $10,000 of carryover. We also have an additional bus of 60,000 that was brought forward earlier. Sound system at the high school, and that was a discussion as part of the referendum, but was not included as part of the referendum. But there's still a need for the district, so that would be $90,000. The discussion about developing the fields, the playing fields and sprinkler systems, the SS9 property just south of the high school, about $200,000. One-time transportation payment of 360,000. And then we have some third-party billing carryover of 133,000. So increased expenditures of 2.3 million dollars. A lot of that, again, is that carryover from the prior year where we allow them, we budget for them to be able to utilize that. They, you know, very rarely do they spend all of that in the next year, but we do allow them and we do budget for them to be able to use that carryover. So you can see our final revised budget. The district, because of the additional $480,000 that we allocated to the revenues, you can see in the unassigned operating. That top part of our budget is what we really look at as far as what the district can utilize for staffing and all types of payments for the district. That's the majority of the budget. Anything below that assigned/unassigned piece, those are restricted funds. And those restricted funds can only be used for those particular areas and can't be used for anything else. And so the majority of it is in that top portion of the budget. And you can see that that total of $12,820,000, that represents over 14% of our expenditures. So we are slightly above our fund balance policy. But as we begin to open these new schools, you'll see that we do start to dip into those for staffing and additional custodians and those types of things as we move forward. And then again, at the bottom, the total restricted, those areas, staff development, medical assistance or third-party billing, that are operations, all of those particular areas. We are spending some of those areas down as well, but we still have a very healthy fund balance for our operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance. And we'll be dipping into those a little bit as we continue through this construction process. Revenues and expenditures for funds two and four. You can see we've added some additional equipment expenditures for some of these construction projects as we add some equipment for the new kitchens that were being added. Fund four, community education, there's some slight changes in those as well from the preliminary budget. And those are pretty small changes there. So for all the other funds in the district, you can see we have our food service budget. We still will see just slightly under a million dollars in the fund balance. We do plan to continue to spend that down as well through the next couple of years. Just purchasing new equipment for the new kitchens. Our community budget, we're planning on, we're looking at that budget very closely to ensure that we are stable in that budget. Our building fund, we'll continue to spend that down as we spend our construction and build the new buildings in the district. Our debt service, you can see that we still have a very good fund balance there, even though we did refund some of that fund balance back to our taxpayers. And then we have our internal service fund, which is our health and dental, self-insured dental. About 4.7 million. And then our OPEB revocable trust is about 8.7 million dollars there. We do have an $11 million liability there, but we continue to see some revenue coming in from, just from interest from that fund balance. So that's what I have for the budget, and I'll talk about enrollment as we go to the next agenda item.
All right. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the 2018-2019 budget?
So moved.
By Lee and seconded by Ben, are there any questions or comments from Ms. Sink? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, that passes four to zero. Next on the agenda is open enrollment for 2019-2020.
So as part of our December process as well, we talk about our open enrollment for the 1920 school year. It seems very odd to say 1920 already. But we do look forward as we start the budget process and looking forward how that affects our budget. As you know, enrollment is our largest driving factor in determining the revenue budget for the district. For the past couple of years, the district has allowed 75 open enrolled kindergarten at 1% at all grade levels. And as we've projected out for the next five years, we have included that same projection as we've worked through that process. And so we're recommending that we continue. The board approved 75 open enrolled kindergarten students at 1% at all other levels.
All right. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the resolution relating to open enrollment for 2019-2020?
So may.
By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? Mary?
Do we have, well, first of all, we're getting four new classrooms for next year.
At the elementary level, yes, we are.
And Westwood, Edgewood will be?
There'll be some changes there as well because we're adding in the new cafeteria and other spaces there as well. So there'll be some remodeling of those spaces. A music room will be added there and an art room. And there'll be some flex spaces there as well added where the old cafeteria was.
So what's our actual listed or stated capacity for like kindergarten and first grade?
Well, because it's individually in each building, that adds, those four classrooms are added at Jeffers Pond and Redtail Ridge for kindergarten. Because as you remember, you know, we're only like in the third or fourth year of all-day, everyday kindergarten in the past. It was a half-day kindergarten program. And that's part of the reason as well, a lot of schools are seeing some crowding in their schools because that added some definite, used a lot of our classroom space up at our elementary school. So this does make our Jeffers Pond Elementary and Redtail Ridge Elementary now, they have enough classrooms for kindergarten, for all-day kindergarten. Whereas in the past, they only had, they had two, now they have four.
What's our stated capacity, though, for let's say kindergarten and first grade or maybe second grade too? Because for the grades, because that's what's, you know, when you open or close open enrollment, the state says, you know, they do it based upon capacity by grade, so you could do it by grade. Do we have a capacity number for those that we've been planning against? Because we've grown, we're experiencing organic growth between 4% to 6% outside of open enrollment. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know?
Right. I wish I would have had the question before because I did not bring any of that information with me to the meeting tonight. And so I do have that information. I just don't have it with me. And so I'm not able to really speak to that at this point because I would need that information in front of me to be able to give you the correct answer. But yes, we do have those numbers.
You have kindergarten, first and second grade capacity?
For elementary, for our elementary schools.
By grade, not by school, but by grade.
I would have to look and see how we've, I mean, we certainly can do that as well, but I know that we have them by the elementary schools, yes.
By building.
I guess I would just say that we've never looked at it that way at the elementary level. So we've always looked at it in terms of how many elementary sections are going to fit in that environment. So that's something, that's an exercise that we haven't gone through. And I think we need to kind of define some parameters for how we might go about that to make sure that it met the board's needs if that was something that we were looking to do.
Well, I know. It's just that the statute says we have to at least accept 1% unless you have a capacity chart by grade. And therefore, you know, a lot of schools that are overcrowded, like we are, have closed open enrollment. And, you know, and that's perfectly legal to do as long as you have and keep according to their limits your capacity by grade, and you have to have it in writing. There's really no statute of limitations of how long you have to have it ahead of time. I'm just trying to, you know, I was looking at the numbers, and again, I've always been concerned about this. I haven't been quiet about it, is that, again, overcrowding at the elementary levels. And I understand that we're so close to getting another elementary school. We are adding four new classrooms. We are adding the additional space. I understand there's a waiting list for the pre-K from what I gathered from the numbers, which is good for us.
I'm not sure that we do have a waiting list for pre-K. I'm unaware of that.
I think it depends on time of year.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
For whether we do or don't there, yeah.
And I just want to emphasize that, you know, and I've said this before, our younger kids, to me, they're the most vulnerable in this. And I just want to, I understand the situation that we're in. I just don't like seeing, you know, the overcrowding that we've been experiencing since 2014, 2015. And we've grown extensively since then, and we are experiencing organic growth. So I just would like some level of assurance that we're good with the additional kids because trying to keep the space, trying to keep enough open spaces for them, particularly at the younger levels, to be able to be able to move around and not be overcrowded.
The district did a lot of work last year in moving a lot of our students from our main Redtail Ridge, which was our most crowded elementary. And so we've done some work on boundary changes to help with that situation. One of our goals at the time was to ensure that our overcrowding was consistent between our elementary buildings. And I think we've accomplished that. As we've looked at our capacity at each of our elementaries, we're right around that 100 to 103%. The one exception to that would be Laola de Lago. And so, but we've also reduced the capacity at Westwood so that those students can move into Westwood spaces at Westwood. So we have made some adjustments there as well, yes.
Probably rephrase it just a little bit, although certainly that's accurate, just to make the point that we're still living within the plan and the board parameters that were established when we did that capacity study a year ago in planning for that intervening time between then and the new elementary opening. So we're still living within those parameters. So I would kind of think that would be the discussion more so would be, you know, are those still the appropriate parameters?
Are there any other questions?
The only comment I guess I'd make is that over the last couple of years, when we've had this discussion, the administrators have assured us that they can make it work, and it seems that it has. We do have a new elementary coming online, and I trust that they're saying they can make it work again for one more year. So I'm in support of the recommendation.
And then I just add on to Lee's comments is, you know, we had the same amount last year, which I think we didn't quite get to or almost, I mean, we still had a spot or two open as of not that long ago. So it seems to be the right amount, I mean, in my mind. So, and, you know, school choice is important to keep. I mean, I think people enjoy, you know, appreciate school choice. So it's something that I'll continue to support. And I think we've done the short-term options that we talked about with referendum planning that are in place. And we've relieved those pressure areas that, short-term wise, that were the biggest issues. So I will be supporting it.
With that, this is a resolution. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
I did. Okay, this is a resolution, so it's a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
That passes four to one. Next on the agenda is the facilities planning and construction, presented tonight by Assistant, Dr. Stoll, will you pinch hitting tonight? Director of Operations, Mr. Delwo, and Director of Communications, Mrs. Musman.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members. Tonight, as you said, we'll be sharing an update on some facilities planning and construction. We are coming to the end of the design teamwork and continue to be in full swing with the construction work across the district. In reviewing the construction project status overview chart, whoops.
Oh.
Okay.
Are you running? Sorry.
I think I got it.
If it doesn't work, you've got it. Thank you.
In reviewing this chart that you've seen a number of times, you can see that we continue to make progress as noted by the shaded areas that represent the work completion. The new elementary school design was discussed at several and reviewed at several finance facilities and long-range planning committee meetings. And the presentation that you see tonight around the elementary building, we also discussed at the November 19 school board study session. Tonight, after this final review, we will seek approval on the design plans of the new elementary as well as permission to advertise for bids. You can see the outline. I'll go ahead and give an overview of the new elementary school and share those pieces. Jim and Maureen will look at the construction updates, and then Kristy will talk a little bit about the naming process of the new elementary school. As a review, this is the mission that was created at the beginning of the process by the elementary design team. The new Prior Lake Savage Elementary School will be a welcoming, creative and safe environment that encourages innovation and flexible learning practices that are conducive to all styles of personalized learning and promotes school-community pride. In order to create such an environment and bring that mission to life, there have been guiding principles that were created that we have used throughout the entire process. You'll see these principles represented throughout the rest of the presentation in the design of the new elementary school. The elementary design team held their last meeting on November 8. The team had an opportunity to see the results of input from multiple user groups who helped to advance the designs based on their ideas of how best the space would be used. We had office staff who took a look at the office spaces and custodial staff to take a look at some of the receiving areas. Teachers, certainly, kids company to take a look at how the spaces would be used. So many voices were a part of the process, and the design team feedback was that the mission and the guiding principles were upheld and withstood the process. The guiding principles and mission really have grounded the process for the team. The elementary design team also, and again, they spent hours on this, they feel really good about this design. They feel like it's a great combination between the designs of Redtail and Jeffers Pond. Redtail and Jeffers Pond and Glendale. And then they also were able to incorporate some of the other designs that they saw in some of the visits. You can see here's the building site plan. That area in blue is a proposed location for the school. The gray areas all represent some of the parking, and there were a few changes throughout the process made. Primarily, the parking shifted a little bit due to, there's mining that's still happening north of that solid black line just north of the school. That really ended up being a really good thing for us and it'll be great for traffic flow as well. And we've got parking with the adjacent fields that will be on, on the far side of the, the fields as well for, you know, the activity that takes place in the weekends and nights on those fields. Remember, this is a picture of the main level. Remember, this is a two-story building. Three of the learning studios are on the main floor, A, B, and C. Individual bathrooms were added to the kindergarten rooms during the user group meetings. So the learning studio C will be the kindergarten, it'll be home to the kindergarten students. You can see here at the, at the south end, the bottom arrow is the entrance, the main entrance of the school. So toward the left, you can see the gymnasium and the cafeteria, kitchen area and receiving. To the right is the main office, and we've got some other slides coming forward that will blow that up a little bit. Can see that orange space of learning commons is the hub of, of that building. On the upper level, three more learning studios, A, B, and C there, as well as in the light blue dedicated rooms for art and music. Also in that kind of yellowish color, you can see some flex learning spaces and collaborative spaces for student learning on that upper level. Here's a close-up of the main level of the central part of the building. We can see the learning commons in orange, kind of that lighter goldish-orange. Again, I'll be blowing that up a little bit later, so we'll be talking about that. The office area is in red, and then the special education suite is the light blue. And here you can see the blow up of the office and the special education suite. Again, this is where the user groups were really important. The nurses' office got moved. It's right off the main office right now, which certainly makes sense for students and for parents who are coming in to pick up students who may be ill. You can also see the larger red areas next to the blue are the staff workroom and lounge, then offices throughout to the rest of the office area there. And then the blue, you can see the special education suite. Certainly use some of the, the knowledge that we gained through the design at Glendale this summer as well as we were looking at the special education suite. This photo is a blow up of the learning commons, again, that, that central hub of the, of the school. You can see there's a book room, kind of, and you're going to be, be seeing a two and three-dimensional renderings in a minute, but, so keep that in mind. But you can see where the book room is in the back. There's a collaborative classroom space that can be used if our media specialists or other teachers who use this for direct instruction, and then a lot of open space for student collaboration throughout. You'll be able to see one of the renderings coming up, that that book room is going to be able to be locked, locked so that we can have valuables, the books and some of the other things in there will be safe at night. On the main level, we also have the gym and the kitchen, cafeteria and receiving. There's been a lot of collaboration with teaching staff, child nutritious services staff, custodial staff, kids company staff, to make sure that both the education and the operations part of the building will work together well there. We have had lots of conversations about storage and how we're going to share and make sure that we've got enough storage for everyone there. This next slide shows the typical learning studio, and you can see the, the entrance from the, the bus entry. Students will be coming in, and this is something new to our building, and students will be coming into a mudroom. And that's really where their lockers will be, and they'll have all of their drop-off for their materials and their storage. And then each learning studio has the ability to have five classroom spaces that can be adapted either for five traditional classrooms or really used in whatever way those staff and students need each day to have the flexibility to organize the rooms and that learning space to fit the needs of the lessons and the outcomes of the day. Here's a two-dimensional, two-dimensional rendering of the learning studio. You can see how, as some of the furniture is put in there, you can kind of see how it can be, it can look very much like five separate classrooms. Or once we open up that space and into that common learning space in the middle too, there'll be lots of space for events, for speakers, for whole grade level meetings, and just a lot of flexibility for our teachers and our students to really be able to do the kind of learning that we expect and want right now. Just one of the renderings, so this is as you're walking into the school from the, from the front door. The office is right to the right of the hallway there. Gymnasium, you can see some of the, the windows of the gymnasium. One of the things that the folks who were on the design team really liked with some of the tours is, is how they saw learning on display in the art rooms, the music rooms, the classrooms, the gymnasium. So that's a really nice feature. To the left, you can't see it on this photo, but to the left is the cafeteria, and we'll see that coming up. This is standing, we've just walked into the main, to the school, and now we're looking back at that main doorway, the secured entrance, just like the rest of our buildings that have secured entrances. There'll be, the entry will come right into the main office where we'll have the Raptor visitor management system. You can see the cafeteria there, again, the gymnasium off to the right, and the office would be to the left there. And this is a rendering as you've walked down the hall that we just came in, into the learning commons. You can see the learning stairs. The, the actual stairs of that got shifted in the process. It was on the left side of the stairs and made a lot more sense on the right side. You can see that, kind of back in that corner tucked underneath is that book room that I talked about that we could lock down. And then also the classroom that can be used for, instructionally for teachers or for the media specialist, and then a lot of collaborative space for students to use, both when they're in media classes, but for other teachers to be using throughout the day, depending on what the learning activities are that, that they're going to be doing. Kristy, I might need you. Thank you. And that's just a little closer look of, at the instructional space of the learning commons. Board members, I think you've seen these designs a couple times. I haven't received any questions since the last time you reviewed it, but we'd be happy to take any questions. Or Jim, did I miss anything along this?
I think you did a great job.
Okay. Before we have questions, why don't we take a motion for the approval of the decision for the new elementary and the permission to advertise for bids?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. Are there any questions or comments?
I can, yeah.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I mean, I just really appreciate the amount of stakeholder input on this. I, I think as a board, we've probably, I know I've seen this probably at least six times, and there's been a lot of revision, a lot of thought gone into it, really planning for some of those new spaces. I appreciate that. And as well as just trying to figure out what learning looks like and making our space, our new space as conducive and flexible as possible. So I'm excited to see this take place. And I know our community is as well. And, yeah, just thank you for all the work. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mary.
I, I agree with Stacy. The, the changes that we've seen come across through discussion and comment and feedback have been very, very good and constant improvement and constant thought going into it. And I love the open spaces and the amount of daylight. It is a truly a, a welcome environment just from the pictures. And I, I know things will look different when it's, but, but just the design and stuff like that is, is very, very good. It, it just, it, the whole process has been really, really good. My, you know, my only concern that I said during the study session is that it's, it's too bad we can't do this to all of our elementary schools and make this, make the open areas. And I hope we will get there because I believe that these students are going to have a fabulous experience in here.
Mary, I appreciate, I appreciate that, you know, and that is, we're working on that. And some buildings are more conducive to, you know, finding those flex spaces than others. As we just talked about, that's one of the things I'm really excited about, the Westwood, Edgewood. You know, Westwood doesn't have a lot of common flex spaces right now. We're going to build some in by being able to, to expand that. So, but, you know, our expectation is that personalized learning happens everywhere and collaboration happens everywhere. And you're right, we need to continue to support staff and students in all the buildings to make sure that it happens. Thank you.
I have one comment. I may put you on the spot. This is the final of the board designs of the buildings that were approved by the voters. So, a quick question, you've talked frequently about design teams. How many total members of the community have been involved in design teams for all these projects?
You know, I don't have that mon, that number, but I am so happy to get that number and make sure that it comes back. I know just with the high school and middle school projects that we did earlier this summer, I think it was 172, thank you, no's. And now since then, we've had elementary, we've had user groups. I'm, I mean, the number of user groups for every single one of the projects and staff involved in that, I don't, I don't know. Jim, can you take a stab at it?
Sure, lots.
[laughing].
That's, that's the point I wanted to bring out. It's, it's, all the work here and all the other buildings have been a collaboration of hundreds and hundreds of different people with different user needs. So thank you very much.
I think, just one more thing. I think, I think to Mary's point, you know, what, the design team did a fantastic job bringing ideas forward for the concepts. But it was the user groups who brought the detail to say how they're going to use each of these spaces on a daily basis that really helped enhance and put those wonderful touches on it. So it really has been a great process.
I, I just want to make one more comment. The comments that were made while we were going through the, the design sessions really showed that particularly the, the educators were showing how they were going to walk through and, and use the space. And also by just simulating that walkthrough, it, it created massive numbers of improvements and redesigns and stuff like that, which really helped to make it what it is. Plus the, the space itself is, is flexible. I mean, it's flexible down to its core, which means that as learning needs change, the, the space can change with it, which I, I felt was very, very impressive.
All right, any other? Seeing none, we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, that passes five zero. Next on the agenda, I think you're going to give us an update of construction.
So here we're looking at the high school, and you know, it's amazing how, how quickly everything is changing. These photos, I think Maureen said it at FLEUR last time, they're obsolete. Just can't, you know, we couldn't have went out there today. But, so this is the footings and foundation work at the high school, early bid package 10. You can see the foundations and the footings. More of the same.
I want to, if I could interrupt, can you make a point on that, the exit?
Oh, okay, good point.
You mentioned during FLEUR meetings.
If you look up towards the glass of this picture, that's an emergency exit. And so we have to provide egress at all times. And so we work with the city code officials and actually make a, and that, we kind of call a cattle shoot, but we can get people out in case of an emergency.
Thank you.
Jeffers Pond, block is going up, steel, and I think the concrete decking comes up this week. So we've got a lot of progress. They're attempting to keep heat in so they can lay their block. More of the same. Redtail, similar story as Jeffers. You can see on this one that the planking is up on top of the masonry wall. So there's steel in there. Now they're going to start putting in the veneer brick. So it's a lot of scaffolding, a lot of plastic, and some heat. So there's an example of the steel and the planking. As they're putting it down, it'll sit right on the steel. An interior shot. Edgewood, Westwood. Again, today the plastic is down now at the, that site. But block work and foundations footing and steel's coming. You can see it staged right there and planks will be going up. This is interesting. So we're actually going to be, this is Westwood, the tunnel from Westwood, because we'll be using that tunnel to get plumbing out to the new space. Some underground work. Storm, bridges, nope, that's okay. Bridges ALC, where, as you probably have seen, we're starting to turn dirt there and working on early foundations and footings there as well. And Geo Pierce. So yeah, a lot of, a lot of work going on out there and it changes daily. And I, I will have to say this, that the staffs at the schools that where we're working have been fantastic. It's never easy. It's not like nobody notices we're there, but the admin and the students and the staff have been great for us in construction.
Any questions for Jim? Go ahead, Mary.
Jim, is there, have they started roofing yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, when did they start that?
That'll be later on this, probably spring. They'll get the roofing down and then the final code will have to be when the temperatures are warmer.
Okay. Because I know we-
They're not ready for roofs quite yet.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Next, the new elementary naming process and committee.
Sure. Good evening. We've been talking a lot about the new elementary school. We think it's probably time to give it an identity rather than keep calling it the new elementary school. So we took a look, started by taking a look at your school board policy on naming, which calls for you to approve a committee roster to begin the naming process. So we'll be seeking approval on that tonight. But I want to walk you through our, our plan for the process a little bit too, so you have some idea of what we're going to be doing. I believe Jeff presented to the Finance Facilities and Long-Range Planning Committee last month to start the ball rolling on this. And then since that time, we've been working on putting together a roster. We're here tonight to present that to you. Then really as soon as tomorrow, we can start promoting and soliciting names. We want to take a full month to gather input from the community. With winter break in the middle, we wanted to allow enough time. And we also want to make sure that we not only have parents and staff and students weighing in, but we have time to reach out to the larger community as well so that they know that they have, they are included to provide names as well. Then on January 14th, we'll bring the committee together. All the names will, will come to me. I'll gather them all up and we'll, as a committee, look through all of them. Not sure how many we're going to get. We're hoping that we can bring forth a recommendation on the 14th, but have reserved January 22nd as a meeting date too, if we need to discuss further. And then we'd like to present recommendation or recommendations to you on the January 28th study session, and then February, we'd be calling for board action. So with that, this is the committee roster. What was important to us is to make sure that we had a healthy mix of Savage and Prior Lake people, even though this building's going to be in Savage. We serve a larger community, so we want to get input from, you know, all of our communities. We have staff, parents, committee mem, or community members. So this is the list we put together. It's 14 strong. I should mention too, that as we go to promote this naming process, we'll make sure that people know that per your board policy, it states that the historical and geographical significance of the area should be considered when submitting names. So that's the criteria that's been established in the policy. And of course, committee members can submit names as well. Anybody can. So this is what we're presenting to you tonight for your approval.
All right. With that, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the new elementary committee membership?
Let me.
By Stacy, do I have a second? By Lee, are there any questions or comments? Stacy?
Just one. Kristy, on the process, on the, under the-
Just one, Christie, on the process, on the, under the December 11th to January 10th, the name collection period, communications via PL American, are we also going to put in Savage Pacer as well?
Yes, sorry, that was an oversight. Well, I'll submit it to both, yeah. And hopefully, you know, it's never a guarantee, but they're usually pretty good about helping us out with that as I look at Maggie. And we'll, you know, we'll also send through our normal communication channels, email and social media. We'll put it on our website, you know, we'll get it out any way we can. Principals will help us spread the word too, so.
Okay, great.
Just one comment, after looking at the names, there's a, a number of them that are on there that we'll be able to offer a lot of historical background. Residents that have been in Prior Lake and Savage for quite a while and different age groups. So, I appreciate the people you've picked.
Thank you.
Question?
No, I was just noticing the committee membership is a lot of the same people that were on the facilities committee and a lot of the same people that have been there. Did we look outside of, of any of the normal groups? Did we, I mean, how did somebody get named to the committee membership?
We wanted it just to be a well-rounded group. So, we want to make sure we had support staff and licensed staff. Some are people who have served on the task force or have been on a design committee, excuse me. We, you know, we asked Barry Stock to come in for a historical perspective for the city of Savage, former city manager. So, we just really looked at making sure we had just a well-rounded mix. To the best of our ability.
Okay, one, Stacy, you stole my thunder there about the Savage Pacer, yeah. And second, I just wanted to reiterate, it's our policy 807 that dictates this naming process and the committee will come back with not more than five names. And I urge all community members out there to please submit names, so. All right, any other comments or questions? With that, all those in favor of the naming committee signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, that passes five zero. Next on the agenda is the strategic plan review report. This is a report only, no board action is requested this time. Dr. Stallow?
Great, thank you very much. I am happy to report to our community tonight, an update on the process and where we are with our strategic plan review. As you recall, board members, we had a chance to discuss this at our school board session on November 19th. This just gives a little background, every district and organization does strategic planning a little bit differently. The purpose is always the same, to provide clarity and direction regarding the foundation of our work. Sometimes these documents get put on shelves and I think what I'm most proud of in Prior Lake Savage area schools is we use our strategic plan and roadmap every single day to drive our work. This is just a little bit of a history on where strategic planning has been here and you can see that going back to 2003. But really, we haven't had a large group around this work for 10 years. So, we thought it was definitely time to do some refresh because education has certainly changed in the last 10 years. Because we wanted, we value multiple perspectives. We planned this as a transparent process with an open invitation to all community members. We borrowed a, a format from the city of Prior Lake, but I've never seen a school district that had such an open and inclusive process. We communicated the invitation broadly and certainly our administrators helped promote the event as well. And it worked. We're thrilled that over about 130 people attended the strategic plan review on November 1st. We had a vast representation of stakeholders, students, parents, staff, community members, school board members, representatives from the city of Prior Lake and the city of Savage and several Prior Lake High School alumni. As part of our commitment to community engagement, our purpose was to engage stakeholders in a process to review our strategic plan, to provide input and consultation to inform our future work. These were the outcomes of the actual event and you can see that, that there was a lot of input as I continue talking through this, that we gathered, that'll help lead us forward. As part of the strategic plan review, we shared background information about our school. We reminded people that our enrollment has continued to grow and we anticipate that that trend will continue into the foreseeable future. We also reminded stakeholders that Prior Lake High School is one of the largest schools in the state with over 2,700 kids. We also wanted to make sure that our community understood that our schools, our school district demographics, just like our cities, continue to change. Our 8,796 students represent a wide array of races and ethnicities. And you can see on this slide, the category is defined by the Minnesota Department of Education. We highlighted with our stakeholders on November 1st, the fact that we're fortunate to have excellent staff members across every inch of our district who are dedicated to serving all of our learners. And we do have over 1,300 staff to, to serve our students. We also highlighted priority work in each of the current six strategic directions. Our strategic directions really define the focus of our human, financial and physical resources that provide the foundation for our continuous improvement efforts. If new initiatives don't fall under one of these strategic directions, we shouldn't do it. So, as we looked at, we showed a lot of data. As we looked in strategic direction one at increasing measurable student growth and achievement, we showed a lot of different data sets. Here's one that we showed on our increases in graduation date rates over the years. We also wanted to be sure that our community recognized that we recognize that learning beyond the student day is also an important part of ensuring student growth and achievement. And we're really proud that over 85% of our high schools, our high school students participate in one of our 70-plus co-curricular activities. We think that that says a lot about the learning that happens outside of the school day and within the school day certainly. So, again, we highlighted all of the strategic directions. This is one that I think was really important to share and to share the accomplishments with our stakeholders. So, 10 years ago, we didn't have any mobile devices, nor did we have the infrastructure needed to support technology. And now, to look at where our numbers are, you can just see how much work and resources has gone into this. And I think this shows the importance of the strategic directions in driving and prioritizing our resources to achieve our district goals. At the strategic plan review on November 1st, we also shared some current educational trends and how we're embracing new ways of learning at Prior Lake Savage area schools. I think the, the design of the new elementary school certainly supports that as well. We also reviewed the Laker learner traits and collected input from our stakeholders to ensure that we're focused on helping students gain the skills that are needed to be successful, not just while they're here, but certainly in life. So, our community members who, you know, are going to eventually employ some of our students were able to provide some input around that. Groups discussed and provided input into the desired daily experiences that we want for our students, our families and our staff. We reported these out at each table. We also then, each person got some multi-voting dots so they could prioritize what was most important to them. We received a full report from Teamworks International, who helped facilitate the event. And they collected data on each of the activities as well. So, you can see the full report is here. And a draft of what it looks like in terms of the data collected about the mission delivery point. And we'll continue to use that as we move forward toward improvement as well. The final activity that we used was we asked each table to discuss, review everything that was talked about that evening with the impact on strategic directions and, and looking at our current strategic directions to determine what changes or adjustments or deletions were recommended. And the report also contains everything that the tables reported out on. So, as an admin team, we analyzed the data in the reports and we discussed the input from stakeholders and drafted recommendations that we brought to the board on November 19, at the November 19th study session. Through discussion, board members shared some additional recommendations, most notably, the idea of changing, adding an A to the eSTEM recommendation to change that focus area to eSteam. On November 27th, so right the week after that, administrators reviewed what the board suggested edits were, which are on, in blue here, especially with a focused discussion on the, the question about the eSteam replacing the stakeholder recommendation of eSTEM. Administrators certainly want to continue to value the arts and to incorporate creative components of eSTEM. But we did have some questions about what exactly that means. We've made huge progress in our eSTEM work over the years, but we believe we still have a ways to go incorporating that and integrating it in a consistent fashion across the district, as indicated by some of our current work. So, we're excited to continue to have conversations about that. It's been a really strong brand for us in recent years and just want to talk more about how our work has progressed and what's left to be done in that area. So, we look forward in terms of next steps. We look forward to more discussion with board members at the January 28th school board study session, where we can talk about all of the suggestions that were added and give a little bit more background on the evolution of our district from environmental education to eSTEM, to have that conversation. Depending on what happens on the 28th, we'd certainly be ready to bring recommendations forward in February. And if it needs more discussion, that's certainly fine as well. I think this has been a really rich process so far. I'm grateful to the community for engaging in such a robust way and really excited for continued conversations with the school board on the 28th of January to continue to refine and dictate our future work. So, thank you.
Are there any questions? Just, just one as I leave the board. I hope we involve our teacher groups to actually, instead of just dumping eSteam on them, understand exactly what it would take to implement something if that were to change. So, I hope we get more input from those teacher groups. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of curriculum course, it's in, curriculum and course schedule changes, presented tonight by Director of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Shetinger.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Stallow. I am excited to present and review, just bring this up, new course proposals for the 2019-2020 school year came upon us quickly. These are from Prior Lake High School and our MNCAPS program. A quick review of the course development process. It begins in early fall with the course proposal submitted by one of our teachers or a group of teachers. It proceeds to a site administrator review and a review within the department. And then, is brought to our district curriculum advisory committee, which is composed of teachers, a board member, several parents, for review and discussion, input and feedback. And at this stage, we present it to the school board for approval. And if these are approved, we bring those into the course registration guide in the spring. Depending on registration, that's when we start the course development process. So, if a course doesn't garner enough students to, to run, if it only has 10 or 11 people who register for it, we don't start developing the course or investing in resources until it hits that, that number at the school where it can run. So, and if it does hit that number where it can run, we start developing the course with our teachers and investing in resources in spring and summer. This year, we have several course proposals from our art department, our computer science, our budding computer science program, our physical education program, science, social studies and world language. In art, our teachers are proposing to add a drawing to course to provide more in-depth experience for our students who want more drawing skills and skill development. They're proposing to change our, our studio art class to an AP studio art class. That simply provides an extra opportunity for students who are taking the class to take that AP, that AP exam or that AP demonstration. Students who, students don't have to take that AP exam in order to take the class. We have three additions to our computer science program, which is really exciting. These, the first two, Intro to Computer Science and Python and Intro to JavaScript are really on-ramp courses. We're really working hard to develop semester-long, easy-to-access on-ramp courses for our students who may not have any prior experience in computer science. And we're also really working hard to quickly build the, the capacity of our high school to be ready for our students in elementary and middle who are really developing these skills now and developing interest in it. We're also proposing an AP computer science principles course that is really a more holistic approach to computer science. This could be taken by students in anywhere from grades nine to 12. And it, it essentially is a complement to our existing AP computer science Java class. Physical education is proposing an advanced team sports class, again, for students who want to continue working and playing together and developing their skills in team sports. In science, we have a proposal to change the existing honors physics class to an AP physics class. Again, that would, the content would change in a minor way, align with the AP, with the AP course and give students the opportunity to take college credit. In social studies, we have an interdisciplinary course. It's history through art presented by one of our social studies teachers. Really a way to learn about history and art together in order to see how culture affected art and vice versa. And in world language, we have the third addition to our growing American Sign Language program. This program has grown really quickly, really getting great feedback from students, high, high interest in these classes. So, we're proposing to add a third level to American Sign Language. We're also have a proposal from our Spanish teachers to add a Spanish for heritage speakers class. This would primarily serve students who are native speakers of Spanish, who may not have literacy or writing skills at the level perhaps needed to take AP Spanish. But it would provide a bridge for them to get to some of those higher levels of Spanish and give them credit at the same time. There would be a way for this class to be multi-tiered and differentiated within one section, providing the supports needed for kids at whatever level they come in. There's also proposed to revise the medical Spanish course, which has just kind of come back this year ever, after having not run for a few years, to take it from one quarter to one semester to really reflect the depth of the content and knowledge that, that course contains. So, those are all of our Prior Lake High School course proposals and changes. I also have a few minor revisions to our MNCAPS program. And this, you know, you know a lot about MNCAPS. The program is growing quite a bit every single year. We have Farmington students with us this year and, and quite a few more interested next year. And when Eric Siller, coordinator there, really talked with students about why they registered to participate in MNCAPS, what he found out is they were really primarily interested in concurrent enrollment and being able to earn college credit through some of those courses rather than AP courses. And one of the other issues is that he found that the AP structure was fairly limiting. AP is pretty rigid in how you teach and what you teach and the amount of content you have to kind of cover. And so, it's not really conducive to the type of learning that really shines at MNCAPS. So, most of the changes you'll see here are really changes from offering a course as an AP credit or as an AP offering to a concurrent enrollment. So, we're working with both Hennepin Tech and MCTC for concurrent enrollment opportunities to, again, provide students with college credit through some of these courses, but remove some of the restrictions that AP imposes. So, in our foundations of business pathway, you'll see that the principles of microeconomics class will be, is proposed to be a Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment class. And the, in both semesters, that would provide both the high school and college credit. In the marketing analytics pathway, there's a proposal to change the Intro to Stats course to be a Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment class. And in the education pathway, which would be new this year if we get enough students to enroll, the Intro to Psych course would be a Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment. The Intro to Education course would be a Normandale concurrent enrollment. And the Sociology, Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment and multicultural education and human relations in schools, Normandale concurrent enrollment in semester two. In the medicine and healthcare pathway, the Intro to Psychology would be a Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment again and an Intro to Sociology in the Hennepin Tech concurrent enrollment again in second semester. So, again, most of those changes really are replacement of AP for concurrent enrollment, giving our students both high school and college credit. Any questions?
First, why don't we take a motion, why don't we take a motion first for the acceptance of the course, curriculum and course schedule changes? Do I have a motion?
So may.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, all right. Any questions or comments? Stacy?
On the, on the MNCAPS. I know when we talked, when we kind of revamped it last year and Eric came in, we talked about the need for more- talked about the need for more flexibility within the schedule, so we went down to the two-hour blocks. Now, I see that with the Education pathway, we're trying to do it with three hours. Is there a concern there with it being a new program that it's not flexible enough? Or what was the thinking there?
Possibly. I mean, that's always going to be a trick of getting enough content, especially into the first year of the program, in order to give kids the experience and kind of background knowledge in order to, you know, kind of get invested into the program while also balancing against the other half of their day at the high school. Possibly. I know Eric's been working really closely with our guidance counselors. We also have our secondary guidance program in review right now in order to really articulate what's happening between 6th and 12th and MinCaps and Bridges and all of our other programs to make sure that our students are aware of all the opportunities they have here in the district and that students start looking forward to opportunities like MinCaps and AP and honors courses early, early on, from 7th or 8th grade on at the latest, so that they know that they need to take, you know, X class in 9th grade in order to have that opportunity to take MinCaps in 11th and 12th.
Okay. So they really can plan for it, basically, if they're doing it?
That's our hope, yeah.
Okay. And then the Foundations of Business pathway? That's the current one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're right there. We're successful with three hours?
Mm-hmm. That one's been hugely popular, too. And as has the Marketing Analytics, that's grown quite a bit. So we're hoping that, you know, those year one entry points students get into the experience, are willing to make that investment in their time, and then really get hooked.
All right.
I think, just a comment really of all the, I guess, the ingenuity and kind of the listening to stakeholders that we see across from building development and staff development and kind of making sure that everyone's voices are heard. I mean, I think all of these classes are intriguing to me, and I'm many years removed from school. That, it's really cool to see that we're, it's, the new classes aren't just additional AP classes. There's also intro classes and really kind of it spans the gamut of everything for the high school core classes, but even as we go, MinCaps, you know, being in, I think, year three of that program now, so this will be year four or planning for, it's really cool to see that we've continued to expand that and the enrollment is continuing to push that forward. So nice work in listening to the stakeholders and really kind of delivering what they want and being able to have a lot, if not the majority of the classes count as college credit and kind of prepare everyone at a different level for the next step.
Absolutely. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Obviously, we talked about a lot of these in the curriculum committee meeting. The first one, the AP Computer Science Principles, back on the Prior Lake High School course proposals. That's the, that's the new one that's being sponsored by TPT and all the other groups, right?
Yep. Code.org and TPT, yep.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we're talking the same thing because I know that what happened after the curriculum meeting and how this ended up. And then, obviously, you sent out an update for the Spanish for Heritage Speakers. Is that going to be allowed to have non-Spanish, native Spanish speakers in there in order to make sure the course can go ahead? Is, what was the final decision on that?
It could. It's, it's, so it's, if students, you know, it's based on student interest. If students want to take that class, they can. If they want to take, you know, a traditional Spanish class, they can. And so we're really going to see what enrollment, where it takes us. And several of our world language teachers did reach out to some students and just kind of explain the concept in broad terms, and students were really excited. So I'm hoping that, I'm not sure if we'll get enough students to run it, but I think it could be really good support for students.
And do we get an answer on whether it was accredited, so it would actually count towards a language credit?
It will count towards a language credit. There was some question about it counting for a college credit, and we can't do that right now.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. And on the MinCaps, I think the additions are fantastic. I know the kids that have been through this are really excited about it, but I do have a question about the additional classes here and about the ability, and I think it kind of goes along with what Stacy was saying about being prepared to do this. So we've got juniors in it now. Are the seniors prepared to take these? I mean, do you, do you feel like we've built them up to be able to take advantage of the courses?
I do. I really do. I mean, and I think the MinCaps environment is really supportive of students, you know, and students are highly, highly engaged. We see, and I don't have the exact stat in front of me, but we see a pretty solid jump in GPA from many of our students who join MinCaps because they're engaged, it's relevant to them. All of a sudden, they see their next steps. They see the relevance to their own lives or their post-secondary aspirations. So I do, and I think, I think we'll see a better success rate than with AP.
Okay. I want to jump back. One other question I had was about the AP Physics. Is that a one semester or a one-year course?
That's one year.
That's what I thought.
The first semester is electricity and magnetism, is mechanics, and then electricity and magnetism is essentially Semester Two.
Right. Okay. Just want to make sure, because I know before I thought the physics, honors physics, was that a semester or is that a full year too?
It's a full year.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I just had one more question that I thought of. Just because it's been brought up to me from teachers and community members, and I know, you know, even Dr. Stallow's, I mean, we've talked about it internally, too. Can you discuss just any ideas behind the trades, like bringing some type of training in trades-wise? Because I know there's demand in, you know, obviously, the workforce. Yeah, some type of, is that being looked at through the MinCaps model or?
MinCaps is looking at it. We have our tech ed department, formerly Industrial Technologies, in curriculum review now, and they're really working to expand some of their options. There's a project DIY for women right now that is really getting at the gender gap we see in those programs, and it's been really popular. So we are working to expand some of those. In our middle school, we have a green architecture course, for example, that's been pretty new. It's through Project Lead the Way. Kids are really engaging with it and really loving it. So I think that's, you know, kind of our first area for growth is just expanding and getting more kids into some of those programs that currently exist or are in the works for Prior Lake High School. I think MinCaps certainly could. That could be a potential next step for MinCaps, too. I think it's, it's pretty well-made for it. You know, it aligns pretty well with the kind of learning they do in FabLab and some of those other courses there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know that there's kids out there that get to a certain age and they just know that they're not looking at college. They want to look at something more in the trades, and with the demand being there for those, you know, jobs, I think the same line as getting college credit would be the same line as that, as being able to have more workforce experience to be able to, like, smoothly transition into the workplace.
Absolutely.
Coming out of high school. So I do think that that's an area that, I mean, we continue to need to explore and kind of go after.
And I think the MinCaps model with, you know, mentorships on, you know, real-life learning, you know, doing the actual work they would be doing is the perfect model for things like that.
I want to kind of add on that a little bit because I don't, the Minneapolis Council for the Trades talked about a dramatic need for plumbers, master electricians, construction people, et cetera, and I know that they're really pushing for the high schools to be able to have that type of Vo-Tech in there. But also, as far as the FabLab, some of the things I've heard from parents is they really like to see biomedical in there. And is that, was that being more of a FabLab engineering type of thing, or would you actually put that in MinCaps?
Could be either. You know, one of the things that we really, like, I think that social studies class is a great example of when our teachers see across departments and see the potential for interdisciplinary courses, you know, that's so aligned with what we do with eSTEM in helping kids see the connections between things in a basic way. So it could be, you know, perhaps a FabLab aligned with a science class. You know what I mean? It could be even a simple enough start like that, and then it could grow beyond that. Potential to a MinCaps program, but it definitely could be a next step.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. No other questions or comments? All those in favor of approval of the Curriculum and Course Schedule Changes signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shetinger. Next on the agenda is the approval of the Combined Polling Place Resolution. A new election law in 2017 requires school districts to approve a resolution to combine polling places yearly. The board is requested to adopt the following resolution. The Resolution Establishing the Combined Polling Places for Multiple Precincts and Designating Hours During Which the Polling Places Will Remain Open for Voting for School Districts. Elections Not Held on the Day of a Statewide Election. And that resolution, you see in your packet, what it does, it combines the polling places for Spring Lake Township, Sand Creek Township, Cedar Lake Township in Scott County to Spring Lake Township Hall located in, on Fairlane Avenue in Prior Lake. So do I have a motion for the acceptance of the Combined Polling Place Resolution?
So moved.
By Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is the resolution, requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 That passes five, zero. Next on the agenda is the second and final reading of the policies listed there. I'm going to take the initiative and say we'll adopt these with one motion. So why don't we take a motion in a second, and then we can quickly review each of the policies if there's any questions. So do I have a motion for the acceptance of those policies listed in the agenda?
So may.
By Ben, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy. Are there any questions on any of the policies listed there? We've gone over these in the study session. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of those policies listed signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes five, zero. Next on the agenda is administrative reports. Dr. Stallow.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential. As contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, our collective work is focused on that mission, and tonight I'd like to update you on a couple of things in which we've been engaged. Speaking of MinCaps, the Minnesota Center of Advanced Professional Studies was honored as a recipient of the Willis E. Branning Excellence in Youth Employment Services Award for Scott County. MinCaps Coordinator Eric Sill accepted the award presented by the Dakota Scott Workforce Development Board last Friday. The board recognizes individuals and employers for their extraordinary efforts in education and the workforce. Little information about kindergarten we need to be thinking about. We'll be hosting a kindergarten information session on January 7th at 6:30 at Greenwood Elementary. This event will be for parents of incoming 2019-2020 kindergarten students. Parents will learn about our traditional kindergarten program as well as our Laola de Lago Spanish immersion option. They'll also receive curriculum and enrollment information. This year, we'll be begin offering online enrollment, eliminating the need for us to mail packets and for parents to hand-deliver their forms to school. Online enrollment opens on January 17th. We'll also have help available here at the DSC for those who may need assistance with that. And lastly, 26 junior and senior business students at Prior Lake High School were inducted into the Prior Lake High School chapter of the National Business Honors Society last month. The National Business Honors Society was developed as a way to recognize and honor dynamic students' academic achievement in high school business classes. Membership is based on academic achievement in business classes and overall character, leadership, and service.
Thank you. Any administrative reports this evening? Okay, next, we'll go with the Student Representative Report. Isabella?
Yep. So from the Student Council and NHS aspect of high school, we've been focusing a lot on community service within the past few months, and we've been doing really good on that this year. Throughout this month, with the Community Service Committee on Student Council, we've had bell ringing with the Salvation Army every Saturday at various locations. Through NHS, they've done caroling through their Build a Hand Committee, and their next caroling will be tomorrow night. Recently, Student Council just had a Christmas party, and at our Christmas party, we were able to box 15 gifts for Operation Christmas Child that we're able to send out before the holidays. And coming up on Student Council's radar, we're having a business meeting on Thursday where we'll start planning our sweetheart's dance.
Okay. Next on the agenda is board reports. Lee, Stacy?
I think, well, we just had American Education Week, I think, since our last board meeting, I think. And I just enjoyed my visits. I think I was at four or five schools, from elementary to middle schools, and enjoyed talking to staff and principals about what's going on in the schools. It was fun to see a lot of the construction. I ended up being on the roof of Edgewood, I think. So it was pretty fascinating kind of to see it all in play and, you know, the accommodations that staff have to do each day. So it was kind of fun to see, see that all and get out and about, so.
I had a community ed meeting, and interestingly, part of the, one of the topics with strategic planning had to do with the trades and trying to get more involvement there, and then we had some discussion on mental health as well. So it was a good discussion.
Mary?
Well, I also participated in American Education Week. I went to go see Westwood and hear about their updates, and there are exciting changes as well as middle school, so that was quite exciting. And loved seeing the kids during the day and passing classes, and I also loved all the art projects that were out this time of year. That was pretty cool. I also attended the Minnesota School Board Association, the delegate assemblies, and participated in the discussion and the voting on all of the legislative agendas that are going to be submitted to our legislature through the, through the Minnesota School Board Association. And I highly encourage everyone to read through it. It was quite an enlightening day, meeting with all the members of the various school board associations across the state and also our own region. There was quite a few surprises and quite a few very active discussions on some topics. I think the most important thing was to hear about the various ideas and legislative agendas associated with the crossover subsidy and also with the challenge of correct count of free and reduced lunch and the challenges the various districts are having with getting parents to actually sign up and then get an accurate count so it's, so it's funded correctly from the federal level. That was a quite, quite a vocal and energized discussion on that topic. But the whole thing and all of our voting results, I have the binder here with all the notes here with me, but they're also online at the MSBA, and I highly encourage the rest of the board members as well as the community to review it.
Ben, any final thoughts?
Yeah.
With your board report?
So board report-wise, I had the honor of being at Wolf Ridge last week with Mr. Bedett and the other three fifth-grade teachers from Five Hawks, and it was, it was quite surreal for me, having been there 30-plus years ago now, myself, watching my daughter kind of go through all the same growing, I guess, the things you'd expect from a girl's standpoint from seeing them and her cohort of students entering Wolf Ridge, not really knowing what to expect besides what they've been told and really watching them grow within the week, you know, through classes like Winter Survival and Forest Ecology. I think Ropes Course, obviously, is a big one, but I think really it was, it was quite eye-opening for me that, you know, that we do have a lot of great students that really want to learn and are really passionate about outdoors and everything that comes with that, regardless of the season. And then there was a Facebook post by Sandy Timmerman, who is, who just finished her 30th year coordinating it for the district. So she started post, or started it with a, I don't want to get the numbers wrong, a single school with about 200 students and eight teachers and 24 chaperones. This year, there was three different weeks, six schools, 630 students and 24 teachers along with 111 chaperones. So a large thank you to everyone involved. It's not a single person or a small group of people that orchestrate this. It was special to see from a parent's eyes, also from the board members' eyes, but also what Wolf Ridge has really grown to mean for so many people. So thank you, Mr. Bedett, and the rest of the teachers that orchestrated everything that went along with it. I had a great time. I know my daughter did as well. I'm sure the rest of the students would echo that sentiment, so.
And I also participated in American Education Week, was at the high school and at Red Tell Ridge, both. Students at both buildings enjoy watching the construction every day as it changes. And last, as I thought about my final meeting, I just thought about the things that have been accomplished the last year, year, eight years since I've been here, the one-to-one initiative. I'm going to go through a few of them. eSTEM, district-wide, at all the elementaries, all the green ribbon schools, the ALC, the MinCap program, Laola de Lago FabLab, all the buildings and the growth, the passage of the building referendum and the excess levy refer, render, or excess levy referendum. So with that, I want to thank Dr. Stallow for all your help and thank Sue Ann Gruber, former superintendent. Thank you and your administrative staff for all your help and counsel through the years. Martha, thank you very much. You run the place. We all know that. And last, but not And last but not least, I want to thank all the staff and the teachers and the parents and the students of this district. When I started on strategic planning in 2003 with Dr. Westhaus, they said, what's your elevator speech? Mine is, we've got great administrators, great teachers, great students, great parents. It's a great district. So, thank you very much for all your help. With that, we move on to future events. December 17th study session has been canceled. The break starts December 24th, January 2nd, January 3rd, classes resume, E-12. There's an organizational meeting, the 14th of January at 6:30, and the regular board meeting takes place at 7:00 PM. And the MSBA leadership registration. It's a great event that's held every year by the MSBA, so please RSVP with Martha if you plan on attending. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
By Ben, and I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes five, zero. This meeting is hereby adjourned.